Maskey?
Here.
Schwantes?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Alvarado?
Here.
Osmus? Here. Plowman?
Nelson?
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Okay, I will respectfully request that Mayor Pro Tem, Fagerly, preside over this meeting. I will be listening in, but I'm unable to attend in person, and I'll ask Mayor Pro Tem, Fagerly, to take the meeting from here. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Andrew is here.
Yeah, I don't think she heard him.
Thompson is present.
I just see that now, so thank you.
Can we stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Is there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda?
I'd move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second. We have a motion to approve and a second. Further discussion? We have roll call then?
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
Maskey?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
I can't hear you, Andrew. He's got no voice, but I know, I got him. Nelson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
All right. And the consent items? Clerk Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on the consent agenda for tonight for council's approval is the City Council minutes of September 21st, the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board minutes of September 28th, Planning Commission minutes of September 16th, accounts payable report for September 17th through September 30th, and for council's acceptance, Park and Recreation Board minutes of August 19th, and the Central Community Transit minutes of April 28th.
All right. Thank you. So we need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call?
Councilmember Maskey?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
All right. With that, we'll have the Public Works Safety Report of September 23rd. Andrew, will you be able to do that, or?
Yep, actually, if you can hear me, I think I got the system corrected.
We got you now.
Okay, good. Let me grab it here. I just had to jump on my telephone quick a second to make it happen. Public Works Public Safety Committee met last Wednesday, September 23rd, by electronic means. The time was about 5:03 that the meeting was called to order. Members present were myself, Councilmember Osmus, Councilmember Alvarado, and Councilmember Nelson. Others present are Public Works Director, Mr. Christensen, our Police Chief, Jim Felton, our Fire Chief, Frank Hansen, our Engineering Administrative Assistant was also on remotely, Ms. Del Bosque. The West Central Tribune was present, and we also had some members of the community, local, Mr. Kevin Marty, Jason and Amy Poelk, and Shane Jaaroo. Meeting was called to order, and our first item was regarding the Fire Department FEMA COVID-19 grant, and that was a resolution. Motion was made and seconded by Mr. Alvarado to adopt the resolution, requesting permission to apply and accept if awarded for an assistance to firefighters' grant for COVID-19 supplemental program. And the code on that is AFG-dash-S. And overview of this is that FEMA is providing an additional chance for combination fire departments to apply for funding under the fiscal year 2020 AFG-dash-S. This funding, through this funding opportunity, FEMA will directly award funding to personal protective equipment and other supplies to support the COVID-19 response. FEMA anticipates opening the application period in October of this year. The amount of the grant application was for $40,000, and again, a motion was made and seconded to adopt a resolution authorizing permission to apply for and accept if awarded this FEMA grant, and I will enter that motion now.
I'll second that.
All right. So we have a motion for the Fire Department FEMA COVID-19 grant. Any other questions? Councilmember Maskey?
First of all, I hope we get this grant. I think it sounds like a really good project for us, but the 10% match, we know where that's going to come from when we're successful?
Chief Hansen?
I like the optimism. Thank you very much. It's actually going to come out of our 2020 operating budget. We've got Roman there for that.
Very good.
Any other questions?
Yeah, he brought up what I was going to.
Okay. Chief Hansen, will you be filling out the grant, or?
Yes.
Someone in your department?
Yes, it actually opens up tomorrow morning, so we're planning on spending tomorrow and a couple of days getting it filled out.
You're almost done with it, right?
We're actually ready to go. Just got to throw it into the computer and push send.
All right, good. Any other questions? We have a roll call?
Councilmember Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Maskey?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That's approved. Okay. Councilmember Plowman?
Thank you. The next item on our agenda was a MINDOT Cooperative Construction Agreement. This resulted in a resolution. A little bit of background, the state has improvements scheduled for North Trunk Highway 71. The state project includes bituminous and concrete surfacing, ADA improvements, day turns, and tension cable guardrail from 95 feet south of County Road 90, which is 37th Avenue Northeast to 47th Avenue Northeast. They're requesting the city's participation in the annual future maintenance of the sidewalks on County Stated Highway 24. No sidewalks are indicated at the County Road 90 improvement. The agreement recital is in the attachments here, and I've looked over it, and it is quite a bit of paperwork, being that it is a MINDOT project, but I do believe that there's a map in there similar to what we had in our meeting. And we did adopt the resolution approving the Cooperative Construction Agreement with MINDOT for Trunk Highway 71, and a motion was made and seconded, and I will enter that motion now.
Nelson, second?
All right. We have a motion and a second for the MINDOT Co-op Construction Agreement. Any questions? Staff is all for this? Councilmember Plowman?
Yes, and I don't know if Mr. Christensen is able to speak to any of the additional points, but yeah, because this is a project that isn't necessarily going to require a whole bunch of stuff on the city's end, you know, this is, these are improvements they're going to be making, and eventually, we did discuss the opportunity of the fact that there is, to the west, there is bike path, and there is path along that highway west of the golf course, and now this will kind of complete the pathway section north of the Midwest campus, so that will maybe get our bike paths even closer to actually fully encompassing the city. So that will be future opportunity. With that said, I do believe staff is in favor. If Mr. Christensen wants to add any comments, he may.
I think you covered it well, Mr. Plowman.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? We have a motion. I think we have roll call?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Maskey?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
So that's approved. Mr. Plowman, item four.
Thank you. Item number four was for discussion and for informational purposes. Some information, and also some residents joined us from the area around 15th Street Southwest. We had some members of the public join us, voicing concerns about the stop sign in that neighborhood and the failure of vehicles to yield or stop for that stop sign. They actually have photographic and video evidence of multiple occasions where vehicles are actually side by side racing down the city street. They are likely exceeding the speed limit at times, and there are many occasions where there's children around, and it's certainly become a problematic area. With that said, we had the opportunity to have our Police Chief with us to discuss, you know, the various situations and incidents that have occurred in the times that they've been called out, and the chance that they've had to observe that type of traffic concern. Also, our city engineer did show us our stop sign and signage kind of usage policy, as well as some educational information that I do believe is attached to our packets tonight that we reviewed. And we did have a lengthy, good discussion. We figured at this time, and the committee felt that it was appropriate at this time, that we could make some non, the best way to put it is non-permanent solutions into play that didn't require, didn't have, along with them, some huge budgetary concerns and whatnot, and so we thought that we might take the opportunity this fall to check out some removable or portable speed bump type devices that are widely available, and we thought that those devices might deter traffic from moving too quickly through the neighborhood. And then it was also decided that that area where the stop signs are could be marked, similar to other areas in town where you have pedestrian crossings and whatnot, and those actions could be taken with very minimal cost, and it's all within budget, and it's within the purview of approval of the Department Director, as well as the City Administrator to authorize that to happen. So the committee was in favor of that, and so the consensus by the committee was to employ those tactics this fall, and then have an evaluation just exactly how well that worked, and then readdress the issue in the spring, if necessary, or late winter. Our fifth item was a construction update.
Andrew, we got a question.
Oh, yep, go ahead, go ahead. I'm sorry, I should have stopped for questions.
Not exactly a question, I just wanted to add a little bit more information on that, just because that is at the end of my block where I live. But just to give a little history, this has been an issue for a couple of years, and some of the things that Public Works has tried is to put a reflector on the stop sign itself, and also law enforcement has been there on numerous occasions trying to monitor the stop sign violations, and Public Works also put a flag off of the stop sign and tried to draw attention to the stop sign. So if the issue was that people weren't seeing it, they're trying, they've tried to do everything they can to make it more obvious that that is, that there is a stop sign there. But what, a lot of what we had discussed is the blatant disregard for the stop sign and the people racing down the street and flagrantly just going through the stop sign. So that was the reasoning behind the temporary speed bumps, because we know that the Public Works having to do snow removal, if they were permanent speed bumps, would be an issue. So the possibility of temporary ones came up, and everybody seemed to think that was a good idea, and then also just putting a white line on the street where you see where you would stop by the stop sign, since there isn't a designated crosswalk in that area. But we'll see how that goes, and see if that helps the neighborhood, because it is just to the north of Roosevelt School and kids that are accessing the park and the school on that intersection.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Andrew, proceed, please.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Osmus. Yeah, I maybe did rush through that just a little too hastily, but yeah, that gives a good overview, and the citizens who were on our call and our video conference with us, they did seem quite happy that we were willing to take some proactive measures to try prevent, you know, certainly any kind of injury or any kind of incident like that that we wouldn't have, want to have to address otherwise. The final item that we had to discuss that Wednesday evening was an update on our construction projects. The first one, I believe, that we discussed, and we kind of took these in no particular order, but the big one that's on everybody's mind is South First Street. I had the opportunity of driving that this morning during peak operations, and happy to say that most, if not all, of the traffic barriers are out of the way, and they're maybe bundled up, but they should be off of the right of way. Everything, the bituminous looks up to spec and filled in everywhere it needs to be, and I even see the striping is in the correct location, so it looks like traffic flow is moving along just fine. With regards to a few of the other projects, we discussed about how the weather was obviously going to be a component regarding how quickly those projects were going to be able to be finished up this year, and with a good, looks like we have a good week of weather, working weather coming up, they should be able to make significant progress. And finally, I don't know that we covered it in the meeting, but I did note email that was sent out today and also forwarded by MINDOT regarding the Highway 71 project. I know that Highway 12, we've seen some, on the west end, we've seen some traffic congestion, and we've seen some, you know, some traffic bundling up and some signage and whatnot as they are trying to get the utilities pushed under through and brought through for the project, but by all other accounts, it looks as though the Highway 71 project continues on full steam ahead, and with the good weather, it looks to me, and according to the report, as though that should be open yet this month, so they're planning yet before November rolls in, so we will hope that that is the case. There was no other items to come before us, and unless there's any other questions, I'll stop if there's questions regarding street construction.
I do not see any questions.
See, okay, with no other, with no other questions, we did adjourn by 11 after 7:00 PM, and I would move to file the minutes.
Second.
Nelson, second.
All right. Any other questions? Roll call?
Councilmember Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Maskey?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Next on the agenda is the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Councilmember Fagerly. The Finance Committee met on Thursday, September 24th, at 5:00 PM. Those present were Councilmembers Nelson, Fagerly, Osmus, and Plowman. Others on the teleconference were City Administrator Gramm, City Clerk Thompson, Park and Rec. Director Baumgarn, and Planning and Development Services Director Ramstead. The first item resulted in no action, and that was the request for the Wilmer Stingers' rent reduction. The minutes will list the conversations that took place, which resulted in the committee requesting staff to obtain further information from the Stingers, including what grants they may have received relative to COVID-19 shutdown. And we were going to revisit that, but I believe we've all received an email that that request has been withdrawn. The next item was the CARES Act election grant funding. There is a resolution required for this, and staff explained that the Candy Island County Board has received and approved the CARES Act funds for elections to be distributed in Candy Island County based on the state's default allocation method. By using this method, the city of Wilmer will receive $8,196.10 to be used for election expenses due to COVID-19. A resolution needed to be adopted by the council, acknowledging the adult, the default allocation method for receipt of these funds. It was moved and seconded to recommend a resolution to acknowledge that method, and for the city to receive the amount of the $8,196.10, and I would make that motion now.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second for a resolution for the CARES Act election grant funding for $8,196.10 allocated to the city of Wilmer. Any questions? Roll call?
Councilmember Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Maskey?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
All right. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. The next item is a resolution that's required annually for the agricultural land exemption. Staff explained the policy for the city to temporarily exempt from assessment certain lands currently used for agricultural purposes. Each year, contact is made with the listed landowners to see if their desire is to place the land in agricultural use for the 2021 crop year. The proposed resolution was presented to the committee, listing the property owners that have made the application for the agricultural land exemption, and have met the criteria contained in the city's comprehensive assessment policy. It was moved and seconded, and I would enter that motion now to recommend a resolution to approve the agricultural land exemption of special assessments as presented.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second for the agricultural land exemptions. Any questions? We do this just about every year, so. Roll call?
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Maskey?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
All right. Item four, Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. This was just a discussion item. Dr. Ramstead did update us on the Renaissance loan funding use of the Small Cities Development Program, and that is still being fine-tuned, and we will hear back more information on that as he is continuing to work with the HRA. I think the best part is that there is a goal to award up to $55,000 for five to 11 projects worth of storefronts loans through 2021, and so we will hear more about that as that one moves along. The last item we discussed was the 2021 mayor's proposed budget, and we will be reviewing that similar to what we did last year, in that the full council to be in attendance at future Finance Committee meetings, the second one of this month, I think, will be the first one for that. We should be receiving an email with requests for questions and an outline of what we will be working on at each meeting. There was no further business to come before the committee, and the meeting was adjourned at 5:23, and I would make a motion to accept the minutes now.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to file the minutes for the Finance Committee. Questions? We have roll call?
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
Maskey?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
All right. Item 10, Resolution Appointing Election Judges for the 2020 General Election. That'd be Clerk Thompson?
Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, before you is a resolution that approves our election judges for the upcoming November 3rd general election, and this is a requirement by the state that we have this passed and approved by our council. So it's my recommendation to approve as presented.
All right.
I'll enter that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the election judges. What exactly does it say there? I'll pull it up. It's just the list of all the judges.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions? Julie?
Yes. When I was looking over who the judges are, if somebody is running for office, can they be an election judge?
Yes, Councilmember Osmus, they can serve as an election judge as long as they are not in their area that they are on the ballot for.
All right. Any other questions? Could we have a roll call?
Councilmember Maskey?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
All right, that carries. Item 11, Consideration of Surplus Ridgewater College Property. That'd be Administrator Gramm.
Yes, good evening. This particular item was brought to the city's attention about a week ago, and we didn't have a whole lot of turnaround time to respond back to the state on this particular issue. It identifies a parcel of land, roughly two acres in size, next to Ridgewater College, and it's been declared as surplus property. It's been looked at by the department heads with the city, and we have found no basic use for public purposes from our standpoint. I did offer the communication to the HRA, and they basically have an interest in it, but given the turnaround time of responding of two days, that's not enough, actually, probably five days for them. That just wasn't enough time for them to do their analysis and do what they needed to do, and so they said they would be willing to work directly with the state of Minnesota on this, should they continue to have an interest. So from the city's perspective, I guess we've done all that we can do as far as reviewing it, so I guess at this point in time, unless somebody else has a different opinion on, you know, what it could be used for, I guess I would recommend that the motion be to not purchase the parcel.
All right.
Just a point of procedure, we do have to make a motion, positive or negative, for any kind of a parcel that's offered?
Well, I, you know, no motion, I'll respond back that way also, is that they did not vote to acquire it, so therefore, we're not interested, so you can do it that way also.
All right. Any other questions? I have a question. It was probably, I don't know, 15 years ago, we were looking at a substation fire department. I was going to be up by the golf course, the road that goes north of the radio station. Would this site be big enough for a substation? It's only two acres, and did Police Chief look at this, or Fire Chief?
Yeah, I'll have, I'll have the Fire Chief respond to that directly.
Thank you. We did consider it. The location and the size, it probably is kind of small for us and would not allow us to grow, I think, so we did consider it, though.
Because I think the other site was like five acres way back?
Yeah, I don't remember.
Or 10 acres or something?
Yeah.
But it was just a thought, so. So do we need a motion to, no, just take it for information and let the HRA deal with them?
If the city council wishes to acquire it, there would be an affirmative motion required, but if there's no desire to purchase, then it will just, the answer is no, and I'll respond accordingly to the state.
I think Audrey had her- I think Audrey had her hand up.
Audrey, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I would just ask a, a quick question. I believe the document stated that if they had had the property appraised and that they would only be interested in looking at the appraised value, which is significantly different than what is on the tax rolls for, and so is that a state policy, or is that just how it was offered to us? Does anyone?
That is state policy, that they are required to have it appraised first to determine value, and then they offer it successively to different levels of government, city being the first one.
Any other questions? I guess we'll continue on then. Councilmember announcements? Vicki?
I don't have anything tonight.
Julie?
I would just say that on my drive out here, it was absolutely stunning and gorgeous with the sun setting over the trees, and the colors are just fabulous right now, and so I hope you have the opportunity to go out and enjoy some of this weather we're going to have this next week. And yesterday, I was at Ramblewood Park, and there was a number of people there taking photos, and there was photo shoots going on, I think for some engagement photos and some family photos, so people are, are taking advantage of our parks and the gorgeous colors, and I hope you have an opportunity to do that this week. It's going to be a great week.
Sean?
I will say, we'll keep it here at the council, but I appreciate staff, and particularly IT staff, for putting together this meeting and this hybrid model. I realize that was probably an undertaking where you had to do formats of two different things and merge them into one, and so I do appreciate the energy and effort that went into that. I think we should continue to look at this option, if it is something that is viable for the benefit that you get from it versus the outlay of it. I would also say, I wonder if any of the outlay could be offset in cost through CARES funds. I know we didn't, we, we put most of those into small business loans, which I think is appropriate, however, if there are additional costs to make this go, maybe we could explore it there, because I, I want the community, the community to know we're open, again, for input, we've always have been, but now you can give it input either through in-person or through digital means, and, I mean, we're doing a little experiment here, and I need to know that the benefit outweighs the cost of it, so appreciate all the efforts that city staff went into making this meeting happen.
Kathy?
Speaking of being open for business, and from the conversation we had earlier about 15th Avenue, I would, I received comments from someone across town with some similar concerns, so I just ask our citizens to please be thoughtful, be smart, make good choices, because in an instant, you can change an awful lot of lives and not for the better, so please be smart, and especially around our parks and our schools.
All right. Fernando?
Well, I, I, hey, when Julie gets an upper hand on me, no, but I, I agree with her, take advantage of some of the opportunities, pick up some pumpkins and some fresh apples, they're, they're ripe right now. It's a beautiful time of the year to be out taking pictures, I agree, and, and hats off to Ross and his team for pulling this off. I, I appreciate it, thank you.
All right, I'm going to call on Andrew, but I got a question for you first. The city of Wilmer is going to be doing sewer testing downtown with smoke? Do you know anything about that?
Well, I do, I know the practice, but being that our Public Works Director is with us tonight, I think it would be good if he maybe, if he explained the process in detail just so that everybody can hear it. I do know there have been social media posts and whatnot, and I understand how it works, but he could maybe explain it, it's a little bit better, and then anybody can ask questions if they wish.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Plowman. Members of the council, it's a, in general, or in a nutshell, it's a process by, by which you can find or detect leaks or holes in the system, and so specifically, you, you plug a section of line, you pressurize it with a smoke, so that when you push that smoke into the system, the, it escapes, if you will, through the leaks in the system, and then you can explore and how, explore better how to fix or remedy those, those, those leaks.
So some properties might have some smoke coming up through the basement or sewer lines, right?
You know it's possible.
Yeah, online, it said you have to add some water to something in there.
Yeah, so water, being water is, is heavier than air. If you have water in your, in your line, it shouldn't, it should not allow the smoke through, unless there's, so the only time that the smoke should come out is if there's actually a leak or a broken pipe. If it has water in it, well, it wouldn't have water in it if it's a broken pipe as well, so that's, that's the idea, is to, is to try to figure or find where some of those, some of those leaks might, might be.
Okay, and that's happening this week, isn't it?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. All right, now, Andrew, I'll call on you again.
Thank you, yeah, I have no, no specific announcements for myself, just thanks to staff for putting this meeting together as a first time hybrid meeting. I think it worked out, I apologize. I'm, I guess I'm the only one who had any kind of technical difficulties, so I apologize for that, but thank you for staff making that happen.
Thank you. Audrey?
I have no announcement, just a thank you also.
All right. And I just want to thank the mayor for doing Ron Andrean Appreciation Day in September. He did pass away last week, so it was unfortunate, but God bless him. Committee meetings, Finance?
Finance is not going to be meeting this week, but look for information for the second finance meeting in October.
All right. Andrew?
Public Works, Public Safety will be meeting this week. We have items for our agenda, Wednesday, the 7th, 5:00 p.m., and I believe, as of right now, I believe it's, it's by electronic, if that changes, or if that's wrong, I will address that by email to the committee members. Thanks.
Sean?
Labor will not be meeting on the 12th, because we will have, we're going to session, close session on the end of the 19th city council meeting to talk about labor strategy, negotiation strategies.
All right. Community Development will meet Monday, the 12th, at 5:15, and I assume it's online, is that right, Brian? Yep, okay. Anything else? Good order here.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
We're adjourned, thank you.